Okay.
My gavel.
Was that the gavel?
That's my gavel. Good afternoon. Welcome to this special meeting on August 6. And we're getting started at about 4:32. Catherine, can you please do the call?
Yes, ma'am. Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Goff?
Here.
Trustee Iverson?
Here.
Trustee Rios?
Here.
Trustee, we do not have student trustee Pablo Leon tonight. He has moved on to brighter, greener fields. Trustee Baldini?
Here.
And trustee Segura?
Here. Thank you very much. Welcome, members of the public who are listening and following along. Pablo, like Catherine mentioned, is going to school. He's certainly going to be missed. And I know that Catherine had sent us a, we'll talk about this later in the meeting, but about a resolution group thanking Pablo for his service. Is there any changes from trustees on the agenda? Any comments? Okay, if there are not, if there are none, then the agenda is, we're ready to go with the agenda. Catherine, did we get any cards for public comment?
No, we did not receive any public comment.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are we doing the pledge or?
We can do the pledge. Will you do us the honor, please? Kyle?
Sure. I guess, we don't have a flag, but pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The United States of America.
To the republic.
Dance, dance. Well, I'm a nation.
Oh, my God. Indivisible.
With liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, trustee Iverson. So, 4.1. Well, anyway, I'll do my due diligence. This public comment opportunity is governed by the State of California Brown Act. By definition, this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing rampage points. The board is not able, under the Brown Act, to engage in any level of conversation or discussion. But we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. At this time, the Board of Trustees will devote up to 15 minutes to review comment to the Board of Trustees regarding any subject not appearing on an agenda item for this meeting, but over which the Board has jurisdiction. The public may request that the Board place an item related to the business of the district on a future Board agenda. No action or discussion will occur at this time on such items. Review of each comment shall last no longer than five minutes. Having no cards, no cards, we go to four information discussion action items. And 4.1, Human Resources Document of July 29, 2020. It is an information discussion action item. Does anybody have any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by trustee Baldini and second by trustee Baker? Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll do my due diligence again. Trustee Baker?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Here, excuse me, aye.
Trustee Goff?
Aye.
Trustee Iverson?
You.
Aye.
Trustee Rios?
Aye.
Trustee Baldini? And that's an aye for myself as well. And we go to the second item on the agenda, which is 4.2. It's a draft resolution on student equity and inclusion. If you remember correctly, during the June meeting, I proposed, or we talked about a resolution on equity and inclusivity. Last month, I formed a committee, or a subcommittee, I'm sorry, including myself, trustee Baker, and trustee Rios to review several resolutions. We reviewed approximately six of them and their content from different districts and sent the CCC Senate. And so, we came up with a draft document for our discussion. Mister Rios was unable to be with us, so trustee Baker and myself created what you received in your agenda and attachment. And I hope you had an opportunity to go through it, and I hope that we can make good discussions so that we can come up with something that is good for our district and something that we can feel good about. And this is, you know, just a discussion, and we'll present it for approval at next week's Board meeting. Does anybody have any conclusions, additions, or additions to what the draft that you represented with?
I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. First off, the previous to moving toward a resolution, a month before last, we were, there was some discussion about doing just a statement. And so I wanted to make certain that although the vast majority of the language that is in this was pulled and tweaked and massaged from various other examples, there is a little bit in there that actually came from a statement that I worked on with trustee Goff and trustee Segura separately prior to the formation of this other subcommittee. So, but it's only a very small amount. The vast majority came from those other examples.
My goodness.
Can we have the draft put on the screen?
Catherine, can you please do the draft?
And I also have, I mean, if we want to do this kind of like as a work session, I don't know how you want to plan to do this. But I also have with me up on my other screen the other documents that we used in France. So if anybody wants to, like, where did that come from? I can probably find it. Might take a minute, but I can probably find it.
Yeah, and I have those too. So we thought we would use a Word doc. And any tweaks you wanted to make to this language, I would go ahead and make it while you're discussing.
And clarification, is the two different documents that listed on Board docs right now, one is just, they're both the same language.
There is one comment at the very bottom, I think, of the second.
Yeah, so the second one, we added staff comment. This was staff comment right here.
Understood.
So otherwise, it's the same.
And the highlighted parts, the yellow ones, we felt pretty good about the rest of them, but and will entertain discussion on any of, you know, any of the items, but mainly the yellow ones. We were hoping to get some discussion and approval, what have you.
Just go and scroll down there and just take each one then?
That's a good idea.
And what needs to be done with those yellow parts?
Well, I think, you know, I think we should probably just go through the whole thing. I know it's long, there's a lot of whereas and a lot of resolution resolved too, but I think it would be worthwhile for us all to look at it. Even the title, I would, the very first part that's in bold there was something that I took from one of the schools. I can't recall which. But I did make a pretty significant change that I thought you should at least know about and see if it maybe brings up some discussion. And that was the change from saying black students and African-American students to saying students of color. I decided, you know, the reason I feel like it's worth discussing is because I don't want to diminish or dilute the intent behind the support behind for black students. But especially given our community and the number of other ethnicities that are represented in our student body, I felt like students of color is more inclusive, but I don't want to do it to the exclusion or diminishment of the whole thing that kind of got this started. And also, but, you know, in talking over it with Rosara, we, both of us kind of felt that a couple of the wherethes that do address specifically black Americans, black students, that that was perhaps sufficient, and then we could make the whole thing be more students of color. But I just wanted to make certain that everybody kind of understood that thinking and that there's agreement around it.
I think it's a really positive change. I don't think it diminishes anything in light of our book that we were to read. I think it was, I think it's a really positive change, and it shows that this isn't just focusing on one race or one form of racism. It's really trying to address an overwhelming issue at hand. So I think it's really positive change.
I agree. I did notice, yeah, the title. But I agree with your comments, Jennifer. I think that, like you said, we have so many different groups on campus that I think it's important that we recognize that all of those groups have been affected by the systemic racism.
So, yes, I'm sorry.
Well, this is Michael Baldini. I do, would you like you to consider under dismantling systematic racism, excuse me, and providing a foundation for success for all students of color? There's what we can control, and that's what we could do to break down the support of dismantling systemic racism. And to give, not only from the academic side, but from a moral side as well, a foundation for success for all students of color.
I like that suggestion. I think that's really a good point.
So are you proposing to remove this?
The ensuring, right?
No, no, no. How I said it was, and providing a foundation for success for all students of color.
Foundation? Or?
For success.
Success of all students of color, okay?
What if we said a foundation that supports the success?
Yes.
Yes, that looks very nice. So, there's no comments, there's no discussion, so?
Are we?
But am I assuming that we all are in agreement with, other than those changes that trustee Baldini provided us with? We feel good about it, or?
Are we talking about just this first sentence still?
Well, any content?
Well, I think we're gonna need to go down through the whole page, but.
I assume that everybody read this and reviewed it. So if anybody's marked things, or they have questions or issues with, we should address those.
Well, that's what, essentially, that's what I am, that's my mindset as well. So that's why I said I hate to assume, but is that so? Does anybody have any more comments?
Well, let's go down to the fourth whereas then, because I have a comment there as well.
Oh, please, okay. Go ahead. The fourth?
And that fourth whereas, due to the history of systemic violence, what bothers me is the fact that we are only addressing what is unseen. And it's the unseen that for so long has gone unpunished. And I think that's important to point out, that we saw it. And so now we're going to respond to it? It's all that's been unseen against the helpless, the, you know, those that have experienced that, you know, this horrible platform, you know, was brought to our attention. But it's been going on. So why not say what has been going on is the unseen? And then now we're reacting to something? So I'd appreciate a comment from the rest of my college.
So, Michael, are you saying you want to replace the words after George Floyd, "other crimes," to unseen?
Against people of color that have gone unseen and unpunished.
Ah, okay.
I would be okay with saying unseen. Poor. Or, yeah, because, I mean, because there's definitely, the whole concept of something being systemic is like, yeah, it may not be seen by some, but it's been very deliberate by others. So I think to say unseen, I would say maybe say unseen or ignored, or something like that. Because there's definitely, there's definitely been a lot that's been, I remember in the book, I think, one of the books, I can't remember, it was talking about, like, you know, like, when you're a fish in the water, you don't see the water. You know, so, but it's definitely been seen by those who are affected. And it's been, and it may have been unseen perhaps by others, but not by all. So I would be okay with putting that in there. But I would say I would want to qualify it with another additional descriptor.
I'm okay with that.
Just for a role model that calls for the justice of the world.
It does, you know, with the advent of video or a cellphone, you know, are these just coming to our attention? No, it's just they've been there.
Right. Yeah, I actually saw a poster or something. I can't remember exactly what it said, but it said something like, "Police violence isn't new. It's just being viewed," or something like that. Or it was like, you know, yeah, it's always been there. It's just nobody's been taking pictures before.
So could we add the words after "unpunished," comma, "unpunished," "unpunished," comma, "ignored," comma, "or unseen"? We just.
I like that.
Tell me again, where?
After "unpunished," to put in comma, "or unseen," or "ignored." And I'm not sure if we need two "ors" now that I've said it.
No, I would take out the first "or."
Yeah.
Yeah, my suggestion.
And then just put your Oxford comma in there, and I'll be happy.
Okay. I'm a fan of that comma, too.
I am too.
What's going on here? It's like we need a space there.
I think you have a hyphen.
Yeah, there's a, that'll clean up. I'll clear it up. I don't know what that is. No, it doesn't go away. Okay. And if gone, "unpunished," "unseen," or "ignored," okay?
Should we discuss the first highlighted from the founding of this country that has been routinely?
Yeah, I'd like to hear what Jennifer's thoughts were on this, since she's kind of highlighted it.
Actually, it was Rosara that highlighted it. I wrote it.
Yeah, I was wondering if we, maybe it does, but I was wondering if we need to go from the founding of this country, which is, it's true, because.
Well, I think it's worth, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it's been said at other places. It's been said over and over in different ways. So, I mean, and the resolution works fine without this. But I also think this isn't new. And this isn't, I mean, it's, maybe it's new to some of us. Maybe it's new to a lot of us, but this is not new. And I think that particularly, if we're going to be talking about digging out, surfacing, exposing, eradicating things that are really so very deep to the point that we don't even see them, we almost have to acknowledge that, yeah, I mean, we have been complicit in this, even if we were unaware. And it is part of our history, and we can't just sweep it under the carpet. So that was my thinking. But, you know, but again, the resolution works perfectly fine without that section. So, you know, I'm, either way.
I think this is exactly what the book was talking about. These are very strong words to put in a resolution. If we're true politicians, we would never put these in here. But I think if we're concerned anything, we need to be honest and maybe be uncomfortable. If we're really going to bring about change to Napa Valley College, where I think we're really intentional about doing, I think that we, as a board, should lead the way and not shy away from putting what's uncomfortable out there. So I have no problem leaving that in there.
I have a comment on the paragraph. Just a side note, I am a history graduate of Napa Valley College. So that in itself gives me authority, right?
I have a history degree too, so we can bully it out.
From Napa Valley College, though.
Well, 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 well.
That being said, you know, and this is one of those things that you occasionally see in a movie or a textbook, but it was true. There were auctions for slaves. And so people did have worth. People had worth for their strong backs, for their other skills, maybe as a blacksmith, or so on and so forth. So rightful owner. So to say no value, I think on its technical term, they had little value or worth. But they were certainly recognized as assets and as property. And for me to say, you know, to say no value, it's a technical, yes, it is, but you're dismissing a whole lot of what went on in this country to get to where we are today.
Well, that's an interesting way to look at it. I mean, you could say as individuals, they had no value. They had a value as property.
Right.
But.
I think we need an adjective. A deliberately perpetuated that certain groups have no, what kind of value over.
Intrinsic.
Because you're right, Michael, I mean, property-wise, they were valuable. But that's really not what this is talking about.
Right. And also, this isn't necessarily specifically people, black people or former slaves. This could be anybody. I mean, I think it says certain groups. That's a lot of people. So, yeah, but an adjective would help.
I mean, you could throw in the indigenous peoples of this land. Throw in, you know, certainly as each group in this country, there was, you know, you're worthless, you're Irish, or you're worthless, you're, so to say little, or I agree, some sort of adjective, because they were saw for what they were. And that was cheap labor or something else. Or to do those things that we weren't going to do or didn't have the ask manpower, if you will, or whatever.
The human work, human value?
Yeah, they weren't treated as humans.
Yeah. I came to mind that I said groups have no intrinsic human value.
I like intrinsic, intrinsic human, I love it. Yes. Thank you.
Score one for the English major.
Yay.
That says on the back row.
Oh, and how about the second one? It is time to acknowledge.
Well, for me, I think kind of like what trustee Goff was saying, that this is uncomfortable. But we're not entitled to comfort here. So.
So I guess we'll keep it.
Well, I think also, I mean, one of the things that, again, kind of going back to one of the books, I can't remember. It might have been the White Fragility book. But, and it was comparing some of these issues to like, say, for instance, the right for women to vote. For women to vote, men had to give them permission. Because women didn't have the ability to give themselves the vote. So this is kind of the same thing as saying, okay, yeah, there's a problem here, and it's up to the people who are in power to fix it, even if that makes it uncomfortable. And as of right now, the people in power are predominantly white males. And so, we gotta own it, even the females.
So we're good with that?
Again, Michael here. Architects and perpetrators of a system that unjustly regulates. You know, that white people, that's, you know, it's damning the entire white population. But you'd have to remember those that up in, you know, the northern states that did everything they could, either smuggle or encourage or help those escaping the system, if we're just talking about black Americans. Or the, and, yeah, it's a tough one for me to damn every single white person. But there are certainly a group of whites that were perpetrators and architects of a system that unjustly regulates that. So, you know, that's my comment. What the rest of the board says or adopts, that's fine.
Well, let me just really quickly respond to that, because that was one of the reasons why I included in the second part of that section where it was intentionally or unawares. It, we have, I mean, I don't like to consider myself a racist, but I've definitely, as an individual, benefited from a racist system. And so, yeah, was I unaware of that? Was it unintentional? I, you know, it just happens, because that's the world we live in. So, but if we're going to change that world, we have. Because that's the world we live in. So, but if we're going to change that world, we have to acknowledge that.
I think it's, I think it's fine as it is. It doesn't say all white people.
Yeah. Or all black people for that matter.
Right. So I, I think it's okay.
Okay, awesome. That's great. Any, any more comments on the rest of it? Or there should be another highlighted, right? On the next page?
Well, the second highlighted paragraph, I think you just wanted, I just saw, I think it's a typo. And whether intentionally or unawares, is that just singular or not singular? It's removing that s.
To ask the English professor. She's muted. She's talking, but we can't hear you, Beth.
No, I know. I'm mumbling. I'm trying to, I'm trying to read it.
And if you wanted to be, maybe talk about syntax, I might throw a comma after that and, but. That's a lot of commas.
No, that's good. Oh, please.
I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look and see.
I wouldn't put a comma after and. Eventually. Yeah, I probably.
Maybe unconsciously, we could change it to unconsciously.
Well, yeah. Because. Because I couldn't.
I like unconsciously.
Yeah, more, more. More than often, we are aware, we just don't do anything about whatever the situation might be.
And I know we're, we're paying special attention to the highlighted parts, but if anyone has comments on the other stuff, I mean, we can. Tear the whole thing up.
Was there a comma that I missed? Trustee Dodd?
I was, I was overruled. It only takes, only takes trustee Goff to do that.
No, but did you, did you, did you say you had a comment after the and?
No, it was made, it was made. It's great. Thank you. Chair.
Can I just say we have black Americans here not capitalized and here we have black Americans capitalized? Are we going with capo?
I'm just gonna comment on that. Before we publish, we need to go through and make sure our capitalization is consistent. Because the word board should also be consistently capitalized and it's not. Black Americans.
Okay, thank you.
Mission.
Well, should, should we go one by one?
Well, I think if people have comments or questions. Are we gonna look at the rest of the ones that were highlighted first?
We can go down the line, but it doesn't matter. Whatever makes you comfortable. So. Fine, let's go through the, let's go through the highlighted and then we'll go one, one by one.
And I don't have any idea why that one got highlighted in a different color, but I think we could just call it highlighted. There's no, no special indication that I'm aware of for color. Oh, and you know what? I'm trying to remember. I think, and I'm not certain why, why Rosaria. Called it out and highlighted, but I believe, just to give some additional context on this one, I believe. That this one was my attempt to. Define being racially conscious without using that term and then having to define it. Because in one of the, one of the resolutions, they had done that. They said, whereas we will be racially conscious. Whereas we define racially conscious as, I'm like, well, that's just dumb. So I just squished it together and, and without having to make up a new word.
I like the specificity of this. It really pinpoint what our aim is. And, and I, I like that. I like that. I think it's well. Okay, next.
Okay.
I can speak to the second one because actually I did highlight that one, but the burden for habit is, is, is Rosaria. So she'll have to. She has any comments on that.
No, I was just wondering is that the word of the Napa Valley College resolve. To eliminate institutional discrimination. Okay, well, I, I, I get it now. Institutional discrimination will take steps to not only strive for a greater knowledge about and the celebration of diversity. But also to support deeper understanding of the inherent racism embedded in societal institutions. No, I was just wondering if, if. We can eliminate. You know, but if it's, if it's within, it's within the Napa Valley College, we, we can certainly try. But, you know, I was thinking about it in a broader sense of the word, but. But it's okay.
Well, we can soften it. We could say in an F, in an effort to eliminate. But. I mean, it, it, I mean, it's a strong statement. It's, it's a goal. I mean, it's a, I, I think one of the best. Comments I've heard in any of the. Webinars or whatever I've been to, was somebody, somebody brought up the whole concept of all lives matter versus Black Lives Matter. And somebody asked about it and I can't remember who it was. It was the president of another community college said, you know. All lives matter is a vision statement. We're not there. And so until. Black lives matter and brown lives matter and all of those. And so until we can say all that, we cannot say all lives matter. That that's our vision. So that this is more like a vision as well.
No, I'm okay with leaving it as is.
Well, I, I think, I kind of don't like the way the whole thing reads. It's just. I think there's a probably a number of words that could be eliminated. And. You know, what do we do as a board? We, we. We adopt policies, you know. To, I guess, get the, the college, try to facilitate all of this happening within the college. And I think it's, it's kind of extremely broad. If we're gonna. Sort of deeper, I, I just think the whole wording on this whole section, I, I would. Rewrite it.
So could, could, just like you mentioned, instead of be a result, could we. Take it, examine it to be a policy?
Can we? Madam Chair, I was just curious as to what the feedback was from, and maybe Dr. Kraft, you had this. What's the feedback from? The campus or who was this vetted through before it came to the board?
This isn't ours. It's not.
Yeah, I don't think it went anywhere. It would be nice to get some feedback though.
I mean, maybe that would help us, you know. Kind of, you know, I'd like to hear the feedback from the district if it's possible. Rather than sit here and, I mean, I have no problem hashing it out, but. I'm curious to see what ASNVC and some of the other, Omoja and some of the other groups on campus have to say.
I think that's a great idea, but that's, that's exactly why we're discussing it right now. You know, this is what the board came up with. And then present it to them and, and.
I think, I think it would be, you know. We just need to make certain, you know, if we're talking chicken or egg or cart or horse or whatever. Because, yeah, this is our statement. This is our goal. This is our, you know, line in the sand, whatever you want to call it. But if it's going to work, it definitely has to go to all those other groups for. Because, you know, we create policy, they implement. And so they're the ones that come back and say. Great, this is the direction that we received from the board. How are we going to make this happen? And then, you know, that's the whole other stuff. So I, I agree. It definitely could be cleaned up and just read better. I find, I find it interesting that Rafael, that you want to take words out. Since I felt lawyers always like to add words, but.
No, no, not me. I cut things down as much as I can.
I mean, if anybody, does anybody want to maybe try to massage that? I'd be happy to do it, but I mean, I don't know if we want to do it right now live. Or how you want to handle it.
I don't think we need to do it right now. I'd, I'd be happy to do it, but. Maybe send it back. We'll see it before, everybody will see it before.
True.
Our second look and approval, right?
Yes.
And will ASNVC be able to look at this? And, and it also might be an opportunity to, to direct Dr. Kraft and to. Review. The departments and, and. A little bit further down, we isolate police academy, but. We should be alone in going through. We need to understand where we're coming from, where we're going.
I think that, I mean, this, this is our resolution, the board.
I agree.
If, if people are wanting to send it through all these other departments, I don't see real value in going line by line here right now. I would ask, Ron, have other groups adopted resolutions or statements? That it would be better if we're concerned about what they may say is for us to look at those before we kind of finalize ours. Instead of sending ours out to be vetted by all different groups.
I think a couple of comments and cabinet, if you can feel free to weigh in here. First, in terms of this kind of resolution, and I, I would call built around the topical news. Most of that has happened when students have been not here or school has been not in session. So, and faculty has been out. So I, I don't think that any of our stakeholder groups, I'm looking at cabinet, have weighed in on their own resolution. Certainly nothing out of Senate, any Senate. ASB, ASNVC has not done anything. And to your point, you know, I think this is a resolution of the board. If they're looking for a point leadership, I mean, to be honest. And so you, you have to be very comfortable with what's in this, you know, as a, as a governing board and not just individuals, but. I would say you certainly can, you certainly can ask folks and ask staff, but that would take. It's not, it's not a quick turnaround. We have to wait for people to get back in session. ASP to sit, Academic Senate to sit. So we're, you're talking a month or two before you get responses.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather not wait that long.
I don't know if that's, anybody else can weigh, I mean, any other cabinet member want to weigh in on, on?
I, I just, trustee Iverson, I just feel like if, if we want this resolution to have the impact that I think that we're all. Pushing for, that I think that it, it should be. Vetted. I mean, the board is a representation of the whole district and I think having some of that feedback would, would help me. Feel better around it too, but I understand that the time that would take.
Understand wanting feedback, but as Ron suggested. Now's the time for us to be leaders. And I think that this resolution, we set the tone. For the other groups to say, yeah, we need to, we need to get on board and follow this. So I like the idea of sending this out to the groups, but honestly, I think we should be able to say. This is what Napa Valley College leaves in and what we stand for, and we need all of you to get on board. I think this is a time to say, hey, let's get everybody's feedback and, and kind of schmooze it out. We need as a board to stand up and, and say what we believe in.
Yeah, I mean, like if you don't like it, maybe it's time for you to move on.
Well, I wasn't gonna say that.
Trustee Reos. So you still want to maul this resolve and, and put it in another word?
Yes.
How soon can you, can you do that? Like I said, my wish is to present it. A week from today.
Tomorrow.
At the regular meeting.
I can do it and send it to you tomorrow.
Awesome.
Jennifer, on the next point, why is everything capitalized? Is, is there? It's really bothering me.
It was only because I copied and pasted it from somewhere else and I didn't fix it. I did want to actually talk about this in particular for, because. Kind of hargaining back to my, my opening statement about not wanting to dilute this and. But at the same time, there are lots of groups that have not been given the same options and, and for success that. That the majority, well, I don't even know if you can call it the majority, the, as white folks have had. But I think. I, again, I don't want to dilute it. And so, and I, and I pulled this language from one of the schools. I can't recall. And they were actually referencing something that they, that was like a recommitment that they were as a board recommitting to their equity pledge. I was like, oh, and so I, I even emailed Ron and said, do we have an equity pledge? And he was like, nothing I know of. So I was like, so I was like, well, maybe we need one. And so I was wondering, you know, I. You could easily take out everything between. You could just simply say prevent, prevented equal outcomes of our students on any basis, period. And then you could, and then you could skip to the part that says that we, that we were going to commit to. Listening, examining, blah, 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 blah. And just take out all of those descriptors. And, and it would still be a powerful statement, but I do, but I wanted to leave it in there just for us to discuss. Because I think it would be worthwhile if we don't have something like this already to develop it. Because we've got a lot of focus right now on students of color, but there's lots of other things that marginalize people. And, and I think it would be worthwhile if we don't put it here to put it somewhere else. And so, but we could, but you could easily take out that whole, you know, two, two or three lines. And it's still a powerful statement that totally applies to the rest of the resolution.
Me, I, I, I think that we would do this in a different vehicle. That this really is about race.
I agree.
So I, I would take it out.
Well, in that case, I would, I, you know, I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I would say go ahead, you know, just stop at any, on any basis. And then take out that whole section and then starts up again with that we commit to listen, examine and fundamentally challenge. And then, but I do want, I, I do want to make certain that the intent behind that is captured so that we can address it somewhere else.
I would even take out the, on any basis, because I think it dilutes a little. When you say, NVC acknowledges barriers that have historically excluded. And prevented equal outcomes of our students. And we commit to this, you know, it's very. Broad, but very specific as far as really. All outcomes are possible for students. You're not limited. You're not limiting by not, um, being specific.
I agree.
Yes. Does that look better, trustee Rios?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that looks, it's very inclusive. Um, it's very good. Isn't this resolve another one that was kind of copy and pasted?
Yes, that one was copy and paste from, I think the one that the, the Senate, um, the, the state academic senate did. Um, yeah, and, uh, so in terms of I, and I did actually change some of the language, um, to say that we would actively support those efforts, that we wouldn't be the ones doing them. So I don't know if that's sufficient, uh, uh, to not be taking, um, stepping over any lines.
Uh, maybe Ron can, can comment on that, but that was my thought when I read this. I thought, well, we're not doing it. We're saying we're, we'd support. You know, anything, uh, that these other groups, you know, are, are going to do to, to address the issue.
Yeah, it, it was simply, my note in, in kind of reviewing it was simply to highlight for you that your intent was not to direct, um, the academy or faculty and, and the choice of particular textbooks, because some of, and we talked about this directly, some of the textbooks that are, you know, overtly racist are also considered classics are in our stacks and are studied for their now, you know, they're, they're racist kind of, uh, underpinnings to understand that. So you want to, I just wanted to be clear. I just wanted you to bring it up here to take a look. That's not, I don't think that's your intent, right?
Right.
I have to deal with textbooks in my day job. I do not want to do it here.
I think the wording one would cover that because it doesn't say, um, um, as well as an understanding of bias, stereotyping and discrimination, how we can do to limit. I think you make a good point that a lot of those historical textbooks are used to educate you on how that process has happened and worked. So I think, you know, I think it worked. You hang on to those books, not using them the same way that they were used when they were initially published. So I think, I think you hit it spot on.
And, and I would say, you know, this is, this is, we're not crafting a policy here. If this were policy language, I, I would back you down, but this is a resolution, so you have more, much more latitude in this.
Yeah. And again, this was pretty much taken almost word for word from the academic senate California, of California. And I, um, and then one of the main things I did change was that they said they were going to strive to do it. And I said, we were going to actively support it.
Good. Trustee Baldini had a comment.
Yes, I do. If, if we could move back to the, uh, resolve, we need the board of Napa Valley College, or actually the, the one before that, that we had highlighted. So that last sentence that's highlighted, we commit to listen, examine and fundamentally challenge and change systems. And that needs to be done. When are we going to start that? And we hold, I'll be the next, we mentioned the police academy. And I, and I think again, that we ought to know our community, got to know our students as far as their, their makeup and understand our HR efforts to, and, and listen and examine those efforts on how we hire. Uh, at, at least in a presentation and then listen to the police academy. They're, they're teaching towards post police officer standards and training. So what, what are they teaching or what are they, they, uh, obligated to teach to maintain that status, so on and so forth? It'd be interesting to understand and examine these areas before we just put them up there and, and, uh, um, so, you know, th- these are things that I think we, we as a board need to understand and listen to it and have some deeper understandings. Um, comments?
Are you suggesting this come out?
I, I'm, yes, I'm suggesting it come out and then we direct, uh, Dr. Kraft to provide, um, through his efforts, say, any, um, presentations on, uh, you know, the research is what Dr. Wonah has presented to us on the community, the community we serve, uh, does our, our faculty makeup, our, um, you know, so on and so forth, all the way through our hiring practices, our, um, to have a deeper understanding of, of what's going on there. And, and then also the, uh, to hear from these important elements of, of what have been known over the years as Napa Valley College. Um, and, and I'll, I'll stop now, Rafael.
That's, I, I don't have a, a problem with that. I, when I first read this, this section, I thought, well, we're kind of, um, assuming that there's a problem, you know, with our, it sounds like we're assuming there's a problem with our, our police academy.
Can I, can I address that?
Um, yeah, any second. Let me finish my thought. So it sounded to me like, you know, we're assuming there's a problem. Um, and so that made me a little bit uneasy. Um, you know, with, to your point, Michael, that we don't know exactly what their, um, you know, uh, course of instruction is and, and how they're taught, what they're taught, whether there are things there that we should be, uh, that should, not us, but, but Ron and the administration should look at closely and change or eliminate if, if they implicate, you know, um, discrimination or, or, you know, um, are, are promoting these, these conditions we're trying to, um, eradicate.
And I think I know what Jennifer is going to say, trustee Baker, about what has happened with a couple of our graduates. Uh, over the course of the years, if, if I may extend that, but I, I was curious why we're, um, at this point in time in the resolution. So I'd like to.
What? Yeah. And it actually wasn't about anything specific. And, um, Rosara and I talked about this when we were reviewing it. I had originally, I, I, um, there was another school, I can't remember which one, that had said something about their police academy. And I was like, you know, that's, that's probably worthwhile because this all came to the surface again because of an interaction with police. And I had, uh, and again, you know, to Ron's point, you know, there's racism in history books and English books and everything. And so it's not, it's not just the police, but since we do have a police academy and this did start with a, a police interaction. Um, I had put it in as a whereas I had, you know, and acknowledging this and then saying, you know, that, um, you know, we, we do these things and, and that we, we, we do leadership, we do ethics, we do community policing and everything. And so, uh, but then, but then when talking with Rosara about it and all her comment too, if she wants, um, we, we decided that because there have been, um, some concerns either about programmatic things or specific instances, I'm not sure. But I know that there, there, there have been some concerns that have been raised and again, because it is kind of a hot, um, front and center kind of thing right now. We thought, you know, well, let's, rather than saying you're not doing this right or whatever, just say, we're going to, we're, we're going to be certain that we hold you accountable. This language is actually taken from the police academy's website. This is what they're saying, they are saying they are doing. So all we're saying is, okay, good. We will hold you accountable to that. Um, so in the, so we split it and we left, and the whereas part just says NBC offers a well-respected law enforcement academy. Uh, that trains future and current officers, left it. Yeah, we do that. And now we were resolving that we're going to continue to hold them accountable. So that was, that was the thinking that Rosara and I had. So I don't know if you want to add any to that, Rosara?
No, no, no. And, and I think that Michael is referring to the same issue that we, we discussed when we were going through this.
So, up to you guys.
Thank you.
I mean, we could take, I, I would say that if we were not going, if we were going to take it out, then I would also recommend taking out the previous whereas that refers to the police academy. Because otherwise it kind of hangs out there by itself. Um, so it, it, and, you know, either way, I'm, I'm fine with it. Um, the, I hadn't originally, when I started working on this, thought to even put anything in there about the police academy. But then when I saw in that other, um, school's resolution, I was, I started thinking, I was like, well, you know, it's not inappropriate. Um, especially given just kind of the, uh, the recent history of events that have kind of brought us here. Um, but it's also again, a strong resolution without it.
What do our colleagues have to say?
I think we should leave it.
I like it. So I would leave it.
Yeah, because we're, we're holding the police academy accountable to their mission statement, so.
Understood.
Trustee Rios? Or any, any more comments from the rest of the trustees? Sold. It's ours.
You're a real camel.
That was the last one, right?
Yeah. Uh, I'm sorry, what did we do with the one about the last one?
I agree. I think it, we, we were okay with it. We just were, um, confirming our intent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Staff will take a look at this to make sure that, you know, we'll look for typos and any of that, clean it up. And Catherine will send it back out for, uh.
I'll, I'll send the, my suggested revisions tomorrow.
Perfect. Okay. Then you'll see this, um, as it comes to, um, the board in August for, um, action.
Michael was saying something. I think he got really tense. He was talking.
We didn't get you.
What about actively encourage and support?
Yes, something like that.
Good. I like it.
Yeah, that looks awesome. That looks very good. All right then. That was good.
I hope you guys are having as much fun with this as I am. I don't get to talk to adults very often. Use big words.
Okay. So we're good with the resolution. Um, so we can go to 3.1. Oh, God, goodness gracious. Never mind. Who are those? I'm sorry. I lost my page.
So can you do me a favor? Uh, Catherine, can you go ahead and open up the board review, um, that documentation? Thank you.
Yes, 4.2. So what we have included are the goals and we have also included in the agenda, um, a progress report for each of these goals. That as, uh, we, throughout the year have been tagging your agenda items. Um, I hope I count them all. If you can think of others that I missed, um, please let me know. But the, let me see. Can you, can you see the goals that I've opened?
Yes.
Okay.
The 2019.
Just want to give those a look see, or would you like me to go to the progress report?
Trustees?
Progress report.
And, and you're doing the progress report, um, Catherine, by goal linked to the activity that we can find in terms of board meetings, but also some other actions that we may have taken. Try to queue up your goal, then look at what you've done, you know, literally, you know, by passage or, or approval. And that's, that's how this kind of keys in, correct?
Uh, yes. So here on the left, you see this is the meeting where the action took place. Um, they're not always actions. Sometimes it's, uh, you're just, you requested information, we provide you with information or reports.
And what was the September 4 roll call?
I, I don't know why that one tagged. I'm going to have to go back and look at that. First time I've used this.
It's so easy. We just, we have to show up and it happens.
Yeah, we're glad you showed up.
Yes. I really, I, I really appreciate this document. This is really good. It, it makes, it's, it makes it, um, makes us feel like we're doing stuff. And, uh, and, um, yeah, it's, it's also, it also is showing that, um, that staff is, um, making, is aware of, um, the board goals and, and making them a priority as well. So I appreciate that.
But we're actually doing stuff, Jennifer. It doesn't look like it. We actually do that, so.
So I'm going to say staff does most of it. We show up once a month and bless things.
I agree. It really is helpful. Um, if you needed a, a second, uh, comment on that, it's very helpful.
Would you like me to move to number two? Yes. Wait, let me see. Close that one. Here we go. So this one, I was focused on cultivating external connections, um. And I'm not sure if your professional development would show and, show up in here. Well, this small business development center is an information, information item. You request, uh, this again, where you request information or we simply think you need it, I would consider that professional development.
So it's very extensive and it's, and it's wonderful that we have all those connections and we know that we'll have more. That list will grow.
Okay. And I'll go to number three.
Just a, a comment. I think Jennifer has, has, um, mentioned on a number of, of occasions, uh, kind of a desire for our board to interact with other boards. Um, and I guess as if that's one of the goals kind of under this section, um, I don't think we've done that.
No, and in fact, she mentioned that in the past meeting, but you know.
Yeah. And, um, and yeah, I kind of, I mean, it would be fantastic if we could develop something that even became like an annual or semi-annual or something. Um, I'm, I'm thinking of like, there's, um, with all of the city municipalities and counties, that there's something called Nick Log. It's Napa County Legal. that there's something called NCLAG, it's Napa County League of Governments, and they get together, um, it feels like a lot, I don't know how often, but, um, but it's basically just, I mean, it's, it's, it's partially rubbing elbows. Of course, we can't rub elbows right now, but we can at least look at each other in little boxes. But, um, just putting faces to names and knowing who is doing what, and then, um, and and who's responsible for various things, so that when you need something from one of those groups, you know who to call. So that's part of it. But it's also just kind of keeping, um, making certain, especially with, in terms of like educational partners and other boards that we have students that are feeding up to NBC, to, uh, be sure that all of our boards are actively kind of working together. I know that the staff are doing that, the staff are doing that, but I don't know if the boards are.
Um, based, if I can speak real quickly, based on the conversation, um, from last meeting, I, I did reach out to Barbara Nemko, who said that, um, she'd love to put together, at least as a start, the NCOE board, um, with our board to have a, you know, maybe a it, it could be, it could be an exchange, or a full meeting, or a piece of a meeting, but, but, um, we can move forward with that one first, if you, if you guys are okay with that, that would be a nice kind of county connection.
Yeah, I think that's a good first step.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think as far as like agenda building for anything that we do, um, and with other boards, it would be helpful perhaps to have, um, the, is some of the instructional staff or, or leadership to, to give us some ideas of like what would be helpful? You know, and like, cause I know that, you know, that there were the meetings that were had when the AB7 where they started talking, you know, with all the English teachers got together, and all the math teachers got together. So like, so knowing, you know, what sort of processes, um, they're working toward that we might be able to help support.
Excellent point, Jennifer, I, I like that multiple touch points to support the, uh, the college at, uh, at every level. Prior, just so we get things done.
Yes. So, so we're gonna go, um, Dr. Kraft, your comments, uh, is, is your office gonna try to arrange that with, uh, with Nemko?
Yes, I will, I have a meeting set, um, for her, for the end of this week already to discuss that and some other kind of, um, dual enrollment pieces and other stuff. So I will absolutely bring this up, and, um, we won't, I think August doesn't work, but September, I think we should be able to manage something. And, um, I haven't looked at her calendar, which we were going to discuss, so we will. I definitely, um, have an answer to you and then email the board and talk with you, Rosara, about the, the best day.
Yes, thank you.
Did we, what, did we have any intent in discussing this tonight in doing updates to the goals? Or, because it honestly only just occurred to me that it's been a year. Um, it, it, it doesn't feel like, well, in some respects, it feels like it's been a decade, but, but other things are flying by. So, um, you know, I, I personally still feel really good about these, but they are kind of broad, um, which we intentionally did that. Um, but we, and we still have work to do. Um, I don't know if, 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 if we had any intent in trying to, um, change direction, beef up direction.
Don't we do that at our
This is for 29 to 21. So we're good. Just checking.
I know you liked the conversation, Jennifer, but
I want to keep you here with me.
You're up for your two-year cycle, um, next summer would be the time to review. And, and to tell you the truth, it actually, I think there'll be more emergent information. And it might be even a great time to take a good two-year look. COVID will be whatever it is, and finances will be whatever they are. We'll have a much better picture, I think, towards the end of the spring. And so we could launch maybe into the summer with a, um, a goal retreat, that, that could be excellent.
And maybe by then, we can actually rub elbows again.
Yay, wouldn't be, wouldn't that be something?
Madame Ter, with, with what trustee Baker just said, do we have any plan, I know we, uh, Dr. Kraft, as far as, um, the continuation of Zoom meetings? Uh, you know, looking forward and planning, uh, schedules and so on and so forth as a trustee. Is that going to continue through the year? As getting together to discuss goals and things like that?
I bought additional stock in Zoom this morning, so I'm hoping that, um, the, I think, you know, we're on this, you guys, for certainly this semester. Um, you know, I had this kind of thought, if it, as it, if there was a decline that we could meet, but there really is no there's no advantage to even meeting in, in, in space, kind of, uh, you know, you know, social distancing in our boardroom. This is, seems to be working very effective, at least for right now. So I would assume for this, at least for the end of this term, up through December, um, I wouldn't count on anything differently. I mean, well, I, I'm up for, if Karen changes the rules and, and the state changes, then, then we can, we can pivot on a dime. And, um,
I'm on vacation right now, I'm not fishing like my other trustee frequently does. But I am on vacation, I find that's very helpful to be able to do, uh, my due diligence here, so.
Now that you pointed out, I could be fishing, I should be.
I, I think, I'm looking forward to being able to attend multiple Christmas parties at the same time.
I'm just looking forward to traveling, I mean.
I miss eating out.
I'd like to just, on this, um, on this kind of goal area, you know, for, for the board, this is as to use your comments, it, it is, you've done a great job, there's a lot of things that you have done. Um, not to point it out to find a point, but, but there are, there's excellent material in here that, that, you know, we might be talking points for, for all of you as you go into the community and talk about the, your success and also the college's success, so, um, don't be shy about, you know, singing the praises of the college and our leadership and, and how good you're doing.
Yes, congratulations fellow trustees, we're doing good, yes. Yes, um, so, as much as I regret it, I think we're adjourned. And the time is 5:50, and I miss you guys.
Good to see us next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.